Gable. Of the Sebastian City Council, please stand for the invocation given by Vice Mayor Adams and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our fears may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Your Gable has been found.
Oh.
Candidate for him. Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Coy.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any agenda modifications? Seeing none, we will move on to proclamations, awards, and brief announcements. We have a proclamation now for National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. This is fine. This is a proclamation designating November fourteenth through November twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Whereas the Homeless Family Center of Indian River County has provided emergency shelter, food, clothing, hygiene, counseling, and employment assistance for homeless families. Whereas despite Indian River County boasting one of the highest per capita passive incomes nationwide, the average working poor income of Indian River County is $650 per month. And whereas 100 percent of the homeless people that were served in the programs offered by the Homeless Family Center were families with children. And whereas the Homeless Family Center, in cooperation with Camp Haven, St. Vincent de Paul, Harvest Food and Outreach V and A, Women's Refuge Salvation Army, and Epic Missions, as part of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, desire to raise awareness of this issue and its severity in our county. Now therefore, I Richard H. Gilmore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, Florida, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim November fourteenth through November twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Sebastian, and ask our citizens to help those in our community who provide assistance and care for the hungry and homeless. In witness whereof, I have set my hand. So I will give you that and...
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Wow. Thank you. Being a part of Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week is quite an honor. There are so many families and children out there, right here in Indian River County, that are suffering. We want to bring awareness. We have collaborated with agencies who work strictly with this problem and with business partners who are helping us bring the awareness, collect food and toiletries to take out to the camps and to provide for the other agencies. So I appreciate this very much, and I'll give it over to Tim.
Thank you. I think one of the most appalling numbers they talked about over the last year is a 40 percent rise in the number of homeless families just in the state of Florida. Forty percent. That's huge. Now, what does a homeless family look like? It looks like anyone else that you can meet, any store you would be at. You cannot identify what constitutes a homeless person by just looking at them. Of course, you see them on the corner. The thing about Homeless Family Center is we do deal strictly with families, but we also provide assistance to all homeless. So through a lot of the outreach that we do with a medical clinic that has been so wonderfully provided by a whole family health center, on the first and third Tuesday of every month, we have a legal clinic through Florida Rural Legal Services. We've had people step up and provide dental clinic. And it's just the countless outpouring of the support for the homeless is just wonderful. And it's great that we can identify and try and try to end, but it's about by developing self-sufficiency and not returning to homelessness once they leave Homeless Family Center. And we can only, at this time, reach 21 families at a time as far as their residency, however. With the help of those generous donations and grants, we're hoping to expand that, to assist that. And thank you for honoring the week of the fourteenth to the twenty-second of November.
Thank you for all you do. It's hard to imagine, but there are lots of families that are only one paycheck away from being homeless. And it's just amazing, but there's lots of folks out there that are in need. And the great thing is that you are providing 21 families with places to live. So thank you for all you do. Ken Kilgore, come on down. This is a GFoa Award to Administrative Services.
Not again.[398.56][398.56](Laughter).
Yeah. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFoa, founded in 1906, represents public finance officials throughout the United States and Canada. The association's more than 18,000 members are federal, state, provincial, and local finance officials deeply involved in planning, financing, and implementing thousands of governmental operations in each of their jurisdictions. The GFoa's mission is to enhance and promote the professional management of governmental financial resources by identifying, developing, and advancing fiscal strategies, policies, and practices for the public benefit. The GFoa has accepted the leadership challenge of public finance. Each year, GFoa awards public agencies for excellence in financing, including the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program, established in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. On behalf of the city council, Ken, I'm proud to present you with this Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program from GFoa, and congratulate you and your staff for your hard work in ensuring that the city is in great financial standing. The distinguished budget presentation award from GFoa was also awarded to Mr. Kilgore this year at an earlier date. So, Ken, that's for you. And thank you for all you do.
Now, this is the sixteenth year in a row that we've gotten this award, and of course, it wouldn't be possible without our very capable staff, the team of auditors that help us with the issues on keeping track of all the changes in governmental accounting requirements. We are required by the state to follow those requirements. Of course, I get tremendous support by the city manager and the city council, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment to that. Mr. Kilgore says that very, very offhandedly. This is the eighteenth year in a row that we have received that, and he has been at the helm for a lot of that time. So kudos to him, but not everybody gets this. And again, this is an award for transparency and excellence in financial reporting. So thank you, Mr. Kilgore, for everything that you do, and look forward to hearing from GFoa for the nineteenth year, a year from now.
That's quite an achievement. Some teams do a three-peat, and they go crazy about that. This is unheard of. So we are very blessed to have Ken and his staff, and his staff, working for the city. There are some brief announcements. This Thursday, the Sebastian River High School Homecoming Parade starts at 4:00 p.m. at Indian River Drive from Main Street to Riverview Park for the pep rally. So for any of you out there that are remembering high school, come on down. Saturday, October 31st, Sebastian River Middle School 5K Run, Indian River Drive, start at Riverview Park. Saturday, October 31st, is the city Halloween costume contest in Riverview Park on the east side. That's at 10:00 a.m. And for any of those of you who have not seen that, it's really worth the visit to come out and watch the kids and see how they've dressed up, and they've got dogs dressed up, and it's just, it's great. So that's at 10:00 a.m. Friday through Sunday next week, next weekend, November 6th through the 8th, is Sebastian Clambake Festival in Riverview Park. And on November 22nd is Captain Hiram's River Challenge.
How next weekend, Clambake? Give me a break. A week from Saturday?
A week from Saturday. Not this weekend, but next weekend. Next week.
Must be from where we're brought up. Okay. Next weekend is this weekend, but that's okay.
Okay. This weekend, this coming weekend is not Clambake, but next weekend after this coming weekend.
Halloween is this week.
We cleared that up.[695.16][695.16](Laughter). Whatever. All right, we're done with announcements. Now it brings to us the consent agenda, item number seven. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I have just a small correction before we vote on this. For item B, I think on line number nine, the year is correct. It says incorrect, it says 2016.
Yes, I noticed that, too. That should be noted, it should be 2015, correct?
Yes.
That's item B?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve with correction.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? No, we got to do a roll call?
Let's do a roll call. Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McPartland.
Yes.
Ms. Coy, your microphone is not on.
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously, and now we are to committee reports and appointments. And we have a Natural Resources Board vacancy, and I believe we have one applicant, Vicki Tuncker.
Correct.
Is she here, perchance? Doesn't have to be, but just thought we'd meet her if she's here. Not, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd move to appoint Ms. Tuncker to the position. I think that will be unanimous then.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any committee reports? I just have a brief report. We had our inter-local meeting this Monday for the Indian River Lagoon Council. Mayor Winger and Vice Mayor Joel Tyson from Felsmere met myself here, and Duane DeFries, the director of the new Indian River Lagoon Council, was here, answered a lot of our questions, and let us know a very, gosh, how shall I put it, very large, he's got a lot on his plate, let's put it to you that way. He's really envisioning getting the NEP transferred this next month, which, and there's a lot that has to go into it to do that. But at our meeting, I believe it'll be on the 13th, we're going to try to put together a management team, a management board, and that should allow us to transfer the assets, the hard assets, from the St. John's Water Management District to the new Indian River Lagoon Council. Along with that would be the boat and the trailer and any other hard assets that they have that are designated for the National Estuary Program. He has a very ambitious schedule, I guess is what I really wanted to say. And we brought forward three projects, one from Vero, one from Sebastian. The one from Sebastian that Frank and I kind of decided should be number one on our plate to try to fix would be the pit down by Captain Hiram's, in between Hiram's and Oyster Point, with a baffle box and treatment train, et cetera. So that was presented by our engineer, Frank Watanabe. They had the Vero folks talked about doing, what was it, Frank, that they did? They were, their project was...
Their stormwater...
It was a stormwater project, but they were changing out their stormwater drains or inlets with something...
They were in the process of getting a stormwater utility, apparently.
Right.
So that was part of the discussion.
Right. And then Felsmere had a project, it was a stormwater lake, I believe, that they're putting in. So we ranked all three of those projects, and all three were passed on to Dr. DeFries to take to the, well, the legislature and hopefully beg for some money. So that was about it. All right. Any other committee reports? Seeing none. Public hearings, we have none. Unfinished business, item 10A, approve all ways stop for Angler Street and Schuman Drive.
Yes, sir. Good evening. A few meetings back, a resident came forward and asked us to consider a four-way or always stop at Schuman and Angler. While this wouldn't be something that we would normally bring to council since she made that public appearance, I wanted to make sure the council knew that we had acted on that. I asked Frank to conduct a traffic study, and he's going to talk about that now.
Again, Frank Watanabe, the city engineer. What we did was, based on that request from a citizen to look at an always stop, was really look at safety improvements at the intersection of Angler and Schuman, we did a full traffic investigation. And that typically requires us to go out there and do some data collection. That means go out there and we do approach counts for 24-hour period. We did it for a week. We also did speed surveys with a hand-hill radar to verify the speeds on the road. We also looked at the accident information that the police chief provided us for that for the last five years. And then we also look at just observations at the intersections, pedestrian activities, any restrictions such as site distance or anomalies in the intersections, and we compile that all as a report. And we did that in their packet. With that data, then we pulled up what they call the warrant analysis. When you do an always-stop study to install an always, to install stop signs, you meet these what they call criterias, what they call warrants. And they're under what they call the MUTCD, which is the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That's a federal required guidelines to install always stops. Most DOTs like FDOT follow the same MUTCD, and so we use that same process. There are three criterias or warrants you have to have for an always stop. The first one is five or more correctable accidents, and we did the investigation, there were no accidents reported. Sometimes it could be unreported, but there were no reported. We looked at the volumes. The second one is based on approach volumes. The major street has to have about 300 on an hourly basis for a six-hour period. The size street has about 200 on a six-hour hourly period. It didn't meet that on all six, but it was close. Then the third criteria is 80 percent reduction. Under that 80 percent reduction, this intersection does meet the warrant analysis. In addition to that, the MUTCD does say the engineer has the judgment call to look at the intersection, see if there's any other anomalies, and we did. And if you look at the photograph, it showed if you're parking at Angler looking north, there is a slight, slight obstruction in sight, and that had a concern to me as well. Then in addition to that, we do have pedestrian, school kids, it is a safe-out-to-school corridor, so that triggered me another concern because you have kids walking up and down that corridor. Based on all those issues, and there was no speeding issues, we did the speed surveys, and speed was way below the average posted speed limit, so we're fine there. But it did meet the warrants analysis, so staff is now recommending an always stop at that four-way intersection. And to make sure that is done right, we're going to be putting in the advanced warning signs with flags, new stop signs with flags, and then we're going to stencil in the pavement the word "stop." And then in the future years, that'll just fade away. And that should highlight, you know, that intersection being an always stop, as well as coordinate with Michelle and making sure that the officers are out there.
Yeah, I think that this is a great, a great thing, that someone can come to city council with a complaint, that within very short order, we've done a tremendous amount of traffic study here. I mean, there's many days that were checked, from September 25th all the way through October 12th, counted, engaged our city engineer for a study out there at that four-way stop, and then comes back within about, within less than a month, we're from complaint to now coming to city council for a blessing for this four-way stop. The one thing that I would ask you is, on my trip to visit my grandkids in Dallas, I saw a sign, a stop sign, and it was in the country, and it had, it had like flashing lights around it, and it was solar operated.
Yep.
And it was one of those things where you notice it in the day because of the lights flashing, and I wonder if something like that, because people aren't used to stopping, you know, on Schuman, might not be operative. I don't know how much they cost, I don't know.
Actually, they've gone down in price. We'll take a look at it, and what we could do, if we can get one, install it, and then we could remove it after a year. They do, I've used them before, and they do work well. They stand out, and so we'll take a look into the purchasing one of those. It's a solar, but it has LED lights on the perimeter.
Correct.
It stands out.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you really, you really notice that.
Catches your eye.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't hear you mention it, but one other factor that's going to play a role in this, and it's the bus. The GoLine bus is switching next week. There will be two buses that will meet there at that intersection. So this is really good, this will enhance that, make it much safer for people loading and unloading at the bus stop.
That's actually correct. With the GoLine's new Route 5, Andrew Coy is right, that trips will increase now, so that if met it now, it's going to even more meet the traffic volume, so. And the other issue, too, is the sidewalks along Schuman. It is scheduled for this year to be repaired. They're in poor condition, and we're aware of it. We've had our cones and barricades. As soon as we get going, we'll get those sidewalks repaired as well.
Okay, very good. Looking for a motion, counsel.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second for putting in a four-way stop at Schuman and Angler. Is there anyone from the public here that would speak? Seeing none. Any discussion from counsel? Sally, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McPartland.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously, and now we are on to unfinished business, 10B. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. This is, full disclosure, kind of painful for me. I need to take responsibility for this, for this project. This project had its origins with the Fleming Street paving project. As we moved along with that, Mr. Watanabe did his yearly street analysis and found that Main Street also was in dire need of repair and had some fairly serious damage. So we approached council and tried to use the, well, we did use the change order process to do an overlay of Main Street. Then we moved along with a good idea, a very good idea, of widening Main Street. It certainly needed that out of a safety standpoint. Using the change order process, that was, that was added on. Then the issue came up about some mailboxes that were damaged and weren't moved properly. I made the decision, under my authorization, to have the construction company move the mailboxes themselves, and then also something came along about changing the triangle there at Fleming and Main, which has been a huge thorn for us because of the safety aspect of things. Actually, they're working on that today. That was also under my authorization, below my $15,000 limit. So what was the Fleming Street project morphed into this Fleming-Main Street thing, and then due to the heavy rains in September, we had to put a stop to the Main Street project. And subsequent investigations out there revealed that we had a much bigger problem than what we thought. The road on Main Street, especially on the north side, has failed in spots. The pipe crossings, we think, have partially collapsed. They need to be replaced. So what I'm doing here tonight, and what my agenda transmittal to you shows, is that we are asking once again for another change order, albeit much larger even than the other two. This one is $149,00109, or, excuse me, $142,109. This will put a new base down on Main Street. It will cure the pipe crossing problem that we have, and of course, proceed with the overlay, and the widening is already in there. So looking back on that in retrospect, I would have to say perhaps I should have managed this better. I should have maybe called a timeout, and we could have rebid this thing just with the Main Street issue. We didn't see that at the time. In the future, I will do things different, but tonight I am asking you to consider favorably the $142,109 change order to complete the project.
I have a question, Frank. On the Fleming project, was that a, did they go into the road bed on that, or was this just an overlay?
No, the actual Fleming Street project was a reconstruction project. What it is, is when you reconstruct a project, you tear out the old base, you tear out the old structure beneath the roadway asphalt, and then you rebuild it back up again. And what we typically do, because the materials here in Sebastian has a large water content, you have to use like a cement-treated base to make it real solid. Using just regular material and compacting, it won't give you enough strength. So you put like a cement-treated base to it, that gives you a new base, and then you pave right on top of it. That's what they call a reconstruction of a roadway. And that project, the price was considerably low because the asphalt price back then was still very low per ton. Like right now, asphalt's cheaper because gas went down. I think the reason why we did the, I'd say the piggybacking from the Fleming to the Main Street was because that tonnage of asphalt was extremely low. Typically, asphalt was about 120, and this thing dropped down to like $100 a ton. So I was like, that's huge, when you start paving roads. You could do a lot more road when it's $100 a ton than $120 a ton. I think that's what we were looking at, some of those options. I do have a quick PowerPoint, if you want me to go through it, and just to highlight the public and yourself.
So let me get this straight. So what you're saying is they're going to do the same to Main as they did to Fleming?
Partially. So that's why in my presentation, I kind of go over what we're going to do here on Main Street. Again, this really started off to be a Main Street overlay, then it became a widening, and now I consider it to be a base repair. As the city manager talked about it, there was an original project that started with the Fleming Street project that we all know, and we had issues on that project as well, but it was constructed, and now it's a project that everybody likes and enjoys. There are four change orders that the city manager talked about, and they're highlighted there, overlay, a three-foot widening, mailboxes because we widened the road, we had to kick the mailbox over, and then the median island improvement, that actually, the mayor, I want to give you kudos for, because you made that aware to my attention. With that, in about June, July, I mean, July or August, we had finished the road widened, ready to go. Then the rains came, and then we had to hold up for the rainy season, kind of highlighting in the triangle what we have, and it is a safety issue. When you look at the current situation right now on Main Street, when you're going west, eastbound, you know, you have to stop, and it's kind of like playing chicken with the Fleming Street. It shouldn't have ever been this way. And the new proposal is to take it out and make it a one-way direction of going east, westbound. And that's what they're working on right now, and this is the safest way to do it. And the construction cost wasn't a lot, and so that's what we're proposing, to fix the triangle at Fleming and Main. The issue came up was during those rainy seasons, you know, I was doing my pavement assessments, and lord behold, when we were checking out Main Street, there was some severe issues along the edges of the north side, as well as some large base failure areas, I mean, large base failures that created some large potholes. Then you could just tell from the large base failures that there was structural failure, mainly on the northern side, which would be the westbound direction. So kind of half the road was still good, but the other half wasn't good because of the water. Couldn't get off the asphalt. The solid was up high, held the water in like a little canal, and we started having major base failure. So I just want to show you, these are photographs that were taken just a few weeks ago, and the road has deteriorated tremendously from where we started three months ago to today. And this is one of several other streets that we'll be looking at this coming year, too, where roads, there's a short time window where if you don't get it paved and seal it, you're going to start having major base failures. So then it goes from being $100 overlays to $300 to $400, to half a million dollars, to a million-dollar reconstruction project. And that's where some of these cities you hear, like in Palm Bay and others, because they waited too long, the structure's gone, and now you have to redo the whole road. This situation, we have half a road we have to redo. So basically, I highlighted all the change orders, the cost, and the total nut will be about $319,000 as a new project, you could say, as the change orders, when you add them all up here shown. Just to be safe, I did an engineering cost analysis, which I should. If I did my own engineering estimate, taking half the road, doing what you need to do... as from a road project, which includes the overlays, the widenings, the base failure reconstruction, all the other stuff, it came out to be $360,000. So, the overall change order is still below that 360, so this is still a fair and reasonable price. So based on that, I mean, it makes sense to continue on with the project, because the road right now is half-done. And we are still getting complaints, why isn't the road done? So just wanna highlight to you where we are.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I would agree 100% with what the city manager had to say just a couple of minutes ago. I truly understand the need to go forward with the construction of this road. We all drive on it every single day practically. There's no doubt we need to go forward with this. I am very concerned with the fact that we're doubling the scope of a project through the change order process. And that's concerning to me, and I think that we need to be sure going forward that these types of things don't happen. Because when you're doubling the scope of a project, you're not competitively building essentially major projects in the city. So, I'm concerned about it. I understand we have to do this going forward, so I will support this tonight 100%, but this type of, if I may say this, I don't wanna say it's a mistake, but this type of sort of malfunction on a project of this size is quite a deal, that we have to be sure that we try to avoid in the future.
Any other comments? I think that my concern is that as long as it would be equitable with what we spent on Fleming, Fleming's about 25% longer than Main. Maybe 20% longer than Main.
That's correct too, but Fleming's a lot wider. We actually made it a lot wider road.
Yeah.
There are almost 13-foot lanes, and on the Main Street, we're barely making 10 on either side, 20 feet wide. And so there's a big difference in terms of the amount of asphalt we put in Fleming. And actually, Fleming, we put in almost three inches of asphalt. So we did a lot more, this inch and a half.
Well, and then I guess my question would be, if that was the case, why is this coming in at the same price? We're doing maybe 30% less, maybe 40% less than we did for Fleming.
Because we're only doing part of the roadway. If we had to tear up the whole roadway, I think would be more equitable. And a lot of times, and that's why we're trying to keep the cost back down, we really should've done, we'd done the whole road, just like we did Fleming. It should've just gone out as a whole new road project.
And gone out with a bid.
Yeah, we thought the road was in fair shape, and it was. Three months later, with the rain season, we had all these damages, and that's what happens. And that's why asphalt and pavement is, it's very, very good to do, like we do on a yearly basis, do street assessments. Because you'd be surprised, within a year, we got roads, I'll be coming to you through the city manager, those roads we saw last year was in great shape, Rolling Hills, Bevan, parts of other streets, they're in bad shape now. Last year, they're in great shape. The section of Rolling Hill between Barber and the first, it's almost, it's almost base failure now. So those, we're gonna have to do some major patch repairs just to keep them alive for the coming year, or at least get them onto this year's list. So it's critical we catch them early on before they become huge base problems.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
And just to follow up on that, we've already started that discussion with regard to how much paving we might have, additional paving we might have to do this year because that we didn't budget for. So, we are right now in the process of looking at other projects. And Ken always gets excited when I say, oh, we'll move them out out years and redirect that money for paving. But then that might create a problem, financial problem in out years, and I know about that, I'm aware of that. But essentially, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna look at that. We're not gonna do something stupid and just put ourselves in a bad position with DFC money or local option gas tax money, trying to double up on these road paving projects. But we will look at that as trying to find funds from other places to redirect towards road paving. It's kind of gotten to critical mass here. I think this Main Street thing has given us a huge wake-up call that one huge burst of rain during the rainy season, and all of a sudden, we get this major damage. Obviously, it was ready to go before this, but that certainly exacerbated it and made it worse. So, we hear what the council's saying loud and clear about road paving, and we're gonna be working on that in the coming weeks.
It's interesting to me too, this year, and I'm not exactly sure what the difference is, but as I was driving around when we were having the rain, the rain, the rain, when it came, there were areas where the rain would pool on the road where it never pooled before. And it seemed to be bigger areas, it got deeper. One of the issues, at least close to my home, that I know for a fact is responsible, is the St. Augustine grass is growing up taller than the road and making a barrier for the water not to be able to run down into the swell. Very interesting to look at that. And I've seen it happen in my neighborhood. So, there are some things I think we need to look at in this bigger picture to prevent the pooling of water, because once that water starts to sit, the erosion, it's fast. It works fast, especially when we've been behind in keeping up. So, okay, we gotta fix it this time, but we got a lot to look at, for sure, for sure.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I'd move approval of change order 5A for the Main Street reconstruction.
Okay, I'll second that, because I don't wanna wait four months for a RFP. We have a motion in the second. Is there anyone from the public that would speak on this? Seeing none. Sally, roll call please.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes unanimously. And that brings us now to item number 11, public input. And this is where anyone from the public can bring something to the city council. And like the lady that came and told us about the issues that she had with Angler and Schuman, sometimes we're able to get things done rather quickly. So, is there anyone here that would have public comment? Seeing none. Do we have any new business? No new business? City attorney matters?
None tonight, sir, thank you.
City manager matters?
Nothing this evening, thank you, sir.
City clerk matters?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Coy.
Just real quickly, since we went so fast, I wanna tell folks about a new program that's available here at the Sebastian River Medical Center. Just to say, for those of you who don't know, I quit smoking about eight months ago. Hooray, hooray, hooray. Forty-two years of smoking is over. So if you notice that my cheeks got a little chubby, yep, I gained some weight, but that's okay. I'm enjoying the smoke-free. But there's a brand-new program out, they have it in Vero Beach at the hospital there, and they've just started a program here for lung cancer screening. For those of you who currently may smoke, and those who, especially folks like me, who now are concerned on what damage did I do over time. So, if you're interested, you need to go to your primary care physician, and it's called Low-Dose CAT Scan. It's kinda like having a mammogram, you get a baseline report, and then you go in. And it's a very low-dose CAT scan that they do. Painless, takes just a few minutes, and it gives you a sense of well-being or a sense of, hey, we've got some stuff we need to look at. And the philosophy is, the earlier that you catch stuff like that, the quicker you can resolve it, and the better your chances. So I just wanted to pass that along to folks who may be interested in a new program, and thank you for the time. And that's it for tonight, for me.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to remind the public that when, I believe Tuesday is election day, so get out and vote in your municipal election on Tuesday, and wish my colleagues, Councilmember Coy, Councilmember McPartlin, and Mayor Gilmore, the best of luck on Tuesday.
Thank you. Councilmember McPartlin.
No, sir.
I have nothing tonight. Vice Mayor Adams.
I have nothing.
I guess we're adjourned then.